All right, we'll call the order. This is the Brainerd City Council joint meeting with PUC and EDA. Thursday, May eighth, five thirty PM in council chambers. Tony, please call the roll.
Uh, city councils, Chesak.
Yes.
Johnson.
President.
Stunek.
Here.
Jaeger.
Yep.
Bevins.
Here.
Oday.
Here.
Bado. Public Utilities, Anglin.
Here.
Higgins. Matten.
Here.
Oday.
Here.
EDA, Grisula.
Here.
Kirsch. Sandy.
Here.
All right, everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President.
Mr. Chesak.
Could we call the roll for the EDA with the council members? So I'm clear as to who's on there and who isn't.
Oh, sure. You recall the EDA?
Here, Grisula.
Here.
Kirsch. Oday.
Here.
Johnson.
Yep, here.
Johnson and Sandy.
Here.
I'm here too.
And Jaeger, sorry.
Here we go. He's the chair. All right.
Now, what about Tony Beazer?
Now, next we have number four, approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion?
So move Jaeger.
Second Johnson.
By Jaeger, second by Johnson, any discussion? If none, let's go to a vote, all in favor. Aye. And same sign. We have an agenda. Now we have our single item. Number five, this is a discussion on block metrics, purchase power agreement extension. I believe we're starting off with James Kramvik.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so staff has provided a timeline history in the packet. Um, in at the February fourteenth, EDA meeting, uh, the EDA approved VCV block metrics revised purchase and development agreement, as well as revised construction plans for nineteen eleven TC Drive. Contract has not yet been executed as the land transfer is not complete. Um, you'll see High Tech has been working and staff included a le- the letter from High Tech that shows some of the stipulations for, um, the building permit. Uh, wanted to make the, all the boards, commissions, council aware, block metrics has been, uh, keeping in contact with the community development department throughout the design phase process. Has made substantial progress on the construction documents. Uh, the architect architectural timeline has been moving forward at a very standard pace that we've seen, uh, with typical commercial construction. Um, not all that much different than, uh, projects such as Dunkin' Donuts that we had, uh, a year ago. Uh, VCV Tiger Cloud and Ann Ching, um, never got to this phase. Um, right now structural, electrical, plumbing, engineering, stormwater are substantially complete. Um, I also understand the statements that were made for block metrics that the project could be completed in expedited fashion. Um, reasons were given from block metrics at the BPU commission meeting, as well as a letter that was provided, um, that's included in the packet. Uh, the final issue right now is the roof over the air coolers, uh, which is creating a challenge for the mechanical plans. Um, essentially to ensure the coolers are running according to specifications. So right now they're trying to deal with kind of a heat issue with that. If block metrics proposed a change, uh, potentially removing that, uh, roof, it would require EDA approval and a conditional use permit from the city after city council approved ordinance fifteen eighty-one, which regulates future data centers. Um, this would most likely, uh, with the conditional use permit process, um, be probably around a ninety day process uh, for design revisions, sound studies, um, and then the meetings, planning commission, city council meetings. Uh, so with that, uh, staff does recommend continuing to work with block, block metrics through a power agreement extension and revised purchase and development agreement with the EDA. Um, however, staff is recommending the provision should be added to the power agreement. Um, this would essentially allow, um, essentially with a power agreement to end sooner if there's no progress being made um, towards completion of the project. So the first one would be to execute the power agreement and purchase and development agreement by an agreed upon date. Um, staff came up with September first as a possible date for that. Uh, this wouldn't be in the actual agreement, but a, a potential condition of the agreement that would be attached to it. So both for the purchase and development agreement, as well as a power agreement. Um, also creating a construction commencement deadline. This is in the EDA contract, but it's not been a part of the BPU contract, um, I believe. Um, in the EDA contract states that construction of the minimum improvement shall be deemed to be commenced when the building permit has been issued. The grading on the development property is substantially complete. Uh, could also potentially add a provision that you'd have to have the foundation inspection complete as well for the primary structure. Um, staff looked at this as potentially a, a November first. Really, that's kind of the end of the deadline when you, when you should be doing probably foundation and concrete work. Next one, uh, creating a primary building construction deadline. Uh, this isn't in the EDA, um, contract, but, uh, could be a provision for both. Primary building construction deadline shall be deemed sufficient when installation of all exterior roofing siding, windows and doors are completed. Staff didn't have a timeline, this potentially could be negotiable with, with block metrics and, and High Tech figuring out what that timeline potentially looks like. Um, and then noting that missed construction deadline should allow for termination of the contract. Um, in the, in the EDA contract, we have a thirty day kind of provision where we send a letter, um, stating that you essentially have to do this. If those thirty days expires, then there's ramifications within the EDA contract. Um, again, one of them could be potentially termination of the contract. Um, and then finally, uh, this has been discussed, um, I know with, with BPU, um, some type of monetary penalty if block metrics does not meet the power requirement deadline, which is the extension that they're asking for. Um, I think staff probably recommends, uh, you know, perhaps payment of, of half of the expected power kind of each month that they're not meeting that requirement. So, uh, BPU would risk be continually receiving some of those funds. Um, so with that, the BPU commission asked for a joint meeting, so everyone is on the same page regarding this manner. Um, certainly city council may be involved, um, if it does go to a conditional use permit. Um, but I think BP also just wanted to hear what the city thought about it as well. And then the EDA has the, uh, the, the property as well as the purchase and development agreement. Uh, so staff is not recommending formal approval at this meeting as there's no contract. Was looking for a consensus to continue to move forward and create a contract with agreed upon parameters. And the alternative would be to direct staff to no longer work on, on a contract. So with that, I'll open it up to questions. Um, certainly Danny's here to answer any questions from the BPU side of things as well.
Thank you, James. Does anybody have questions for James or Danny? Mr. Bevins.
Uh, I have questions for both James and Danny.
Perfect.
We'll start with the power requirement.
Yep.
Just to confirm, I watched the two plus hour PUC meeting. I did find it, Mr. Chesak, very informative. Thank you for that advice. We don't have an agreement with them now. They, why is that? Did we offer them one last fall?
They, they had an agreement that was sent to them back in October.
That's what I thought.
And that has been sent to them. They have not executed that agreement.
Okay, so we have offered them one. And what would the deadline have been for that?
That agreement expired on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Their commission voted and approved a renegotiating of a contract through September thirtieth of this year.
Got it. And that's that letter that we have.
Correct.
Right, okay.
We are working through.
So we gave them one.
Mm-hmm.
They just didn't sign it.
For comment, they got a redlined version in October and we had not received, uh, response to that letter before Chris Evans left.
When did we get that redlined?
Oct- October seventh.
Oh, okay.
We've only seen one contract, yep.
Thank you. James, my question for you is, didn't the build, didn't the EDA contract have a building date on it? Not next September.
So the commencement deadline, I believe, was April first on that one.
Of this twenty twenty-five.
That's correct.
Come and gone.
What's that?
Come and gone.
Yep, come and gone, so, uh, and that, that contract has not been executed. Really doesn't allow them to sign it until the, the land has been transferred. Um, so I know they are trying to work through all of making sure that they have all the approvals set up, that they're able to get the stuff and then look at purchasing probably a million dollar property.
I don't understand, a million dollar property, that wasn't a million dollar property.
So, um, with the improvements that were put into it as well.
Those improvements are theirs.
Yep.
That's their decision.
Yep.
They want to put up gold statues of Gabe. That doesn't really, I would disagree that that would improve the property. Anyway, okay, so there was a building date, so they, we offered up a power agreement. They didn't sign that. We had a, a building agreement or whatever that's called, a development agreement. They didn't sign that.
That's correct.
Okay. And the last question I have, and it would be for, probably for Mike Anglin. We never got, we never got, when this thing first came down, we, it went, the power agreement right to PUC, probably as it should, I would argue. Meaning that our past community development director presumed on all our behalf that this was a manufacturing project and allowed in the industrial park. So the city council never looked at it at all. I really think the power agreement still belongs with you, but I didn't actually see a vote on that two and a half hour meeting. But I, I kind of got the gist of what the commissioners thought. Did you guys ever vote that I didn't see?
We did not vote and we went into that meeting with a lot of questions. So really our purpose of that meeting was to ask questions, find out where they were at with their project. They didn't sign the contract, so we, we just had a lot of questions. And when they're asking for a six month extension, we wanted to know, number one, why that was. And, and then also for us, just as a utility, we have an opportunity, we have additional capacity that we could be selling to customers. And so we need to know.
So we're setting what they want off to reserve?
That's correct.
Okay, and the last question I have for you, Mike, is, Mr. Commissioner Higgins mentioned that we're losing, and I think he said fifty-five thousand dollars. Is it a month or a year?
That would be per month.
Per month? How is that? Is that because of the op, what we could, is that an opportunity cost?
Yeah, that's.
Or is that a hard cost?
So Danny, if you'd like to answer that, but we did run those numbers prior to that meeting.
Danny, is that a opportunity cost, meaning that we could be selling it to somebody else?
Correct, it's an opportunity cost based on our average monthly bill.
Really bleeding fifty-five grand, but we kind of are.
Correct, opportunity cost, yes.
Right, okay, no more questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The other thing that we had with that was that, uh, we wanted to have this joint commission meeting because we wanted, there's other contracts involved with this. So with the EDA and as we look, as everybody looks to either extend the contract or draft a new contract, we're all thinking the same thing in terms of what are the conditions? And so we just wanted to have a consistent message between everybody and just to make sure that everybody felt like they're on the same page.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thanks, uh, yeah, this meeting is about four years overdue, so I'm glad you guys called it. So we don't, they don't have a purchase power contract currently, correct? They never signed the development agreement, correct? So what the hell are they looking to extend now? Sounds like they have nothing to extend because they haven't got a contract. What are they trying to extend?
So they're extending, I guess.
Our patients or a contract?
They're looking to extend the offer, um, of the contract. So certainly they, it wouldn't be a contract extension, uh, but what BP would be offering in that contract.
So they're just asking to extend our patients for another six months, but they're not willing to sign any contracts and they have yet to sign anything we've sent to them from BPU, city, ED, anything, right?
So perhaps, um, I know I've talked to Attorney Lengel on this. If the EDA, um, contract was potentially amended with conditions in there upon their signatures, um, there'd be opportunities, but again, from an EDA perspective, they can't sign it until they purchase the property.
But, so who owns the property?
VCV still owns the property.
And why won't they transfer it, sell it, whatever? And question one, but the follow-up question to that is, what does that have to do with the EDA?
So again, if, um, if the, potentially they want to remove the roof or right now our commencement deadline is April first, we'd have to have some type of amended purchase and development agreement based on, on what everybody determines tonight.
An amended agreement that doesn't exist because it's never been signed?
The amended agreement, um, there's been a couple amendments that haven't been signed. Um, it'd be an amendment from the original agreement signed by VCV. Back in.
So we still have a contract with VCV and they're still on the land and that's all. From the EDA perspective, not hypotheticals and conversations and what other people want as it exists, we have a development contract with VCV. VCV owns the land. They're obviously not doing anything because Block Matrix is over there doing things. But Block Matrix is, for their personal reasons, I don't care what they are, not signing any contracts. I just don't see why we would extend our patients at all. If, if they won't even sign a co, there's nothing to extend except for patients and we've extended nearly four years of patience on this. So, I, that's my question is, why? Why, why should we extend?
So, and again, we could certainly ask that question, um, and they could get clarification before any other meetings. Um, I, I would probably get come under the understanding that they're not wanting to probably purchase the, the property at this time without approvals. Um, that would just be my assumption. And they can't sign that contract until the property's been transferred.
That's a risk that comes with business.
Potentially, yes, potentially is.
So now we're just risking time that we could be selling power at fifty-five thousand dollars a month. I know there's people probably lined up at the door still wanting to do the same exact thing. But, is this faster still or is someone else faster? I don't know. We could. Yeah, I'd love to hear from, uh, BPU commission. I didn't, I wasn't able to watch the two hour meeting. Um, I've had talks with staff about a lot of this and Mike Anglin. But if you can fill me in on options that might exist, are there still people calling?
Um, well, JFK, or just for crypto contacted me probably four months ago and asked if there was any opportunity to get more power. And according to Trent, they could take another five in their current location, which even at that, that's ten thousand a month from that. Um, but if they were to go beyond that, they would have to have another facility.
Okay.
So, we asked them a, a lot of these questions and, to be honest, a lot of it was, you know, going back to supply, you know, supply challenges and getting stuff and, and all of that, which never was an excuse in the past, but now all of a sudden it's, you know, going back to tariffs. All of a sudden, you know, they brought that up and, you know, then they brought, well, the noise thing, that, that's slowing them down because they're working with an engineer. And it was the city's fault and I told them, no, I was at the meeting when they were the ones who volunteered because there were a number of people here who were upset. And they were the ones who came out and said, well, we're going to use the, you know, top notch technology and all of that. So I called them out on that and you didn't say anything about that. But we also, I mean, I told them, we, we have two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars between that and three hundred, right? That we're suppo, going to be under contract to do for them. And so, and I mentioned that we would want that two hundred and seventy-five thousand upfront at the time they signed the contract. And now we're not talking a six month extension from today. They want six months to March thirty-first. So, and they said, well, we can get that done, we think, you know, well before it's the six months. I said, well, okay, then why don't we just extend it four months beyond that? And the other thing I was asking for is that if, you know, I told them, we're losing money. Every month you guys don't get this done. And so I said that they should be paying us, you know, substantial amount of money if they don't get going by the end of this contract. If we were to extend it. They didn't say anything.
Did you guys talk about setting up some type of RFP? At this point, we kind of have a picture of what this property that the EDA and the city had, have set up or, or let these two different entities set up and everything's been approved and nobody's moved on anything. And now, like you said, we're hearing about, in a letter that was written on April twenty-third, after they were finally asked on April fifteenth, what's going on with the power agreement, about a contract that expired April first, the day the tariffs esent- essentially started, they're saying that the tariffs are part of the reason. They're saying that COVID supply chain issues type situations are happening too. And it's just, it, it doesn't read well when I read the letter. I'm not saying that I'm completely out with dealing with this, this company. I'm saying I'm not happy with the way things have happened. But i- if there is an opportunity for somebody to swoop in and quickly make this happen, we should be able to look in it, into that without anything being signed at this point, especially with the EDA contract. I, it doesn't make sense to me. It shouldn't take that long. I know they're trying to get everything permitted and everything like that, but we've already done everything that we had to do and it's been months and months and months. So, um, Chesak, you have your hand up?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, thank you. Um, if, if there's any decisions here tonight, um, how will this work if, um, say, EDA says, we're not interested, but utility says, commission says, uh, we are. Do, I mean, does this have to work where, none of this is going to move unless all three bodies here are on the same page? I know, I think between me and Mr. Stunek, everybody's on the EDA, correct?
No, Bevins.
Not Bevins.
Well, not, oh, not, okay, sorry. Okay, so everybody with the exception of myself and Bevins and Stunek.
And Marie, Marie Kersh, Marie Kersh did step in, sir.
Okay, great. Um, so.
Crypto money.
So if that is the case, um, would it not be fair to say that unless we leave this room with somebody saying something agreeable to the EDA? Same with Public Utilities Commission. And then the council comes in, I believe, Mr. Kramvik with the, um, is that more related to the roof exclusively regarding this proposed, uh, site they're going to build on?
Yes, I did confirm with Attorney Lengel, they've submitted building permits, um, ahead of the ordinance, but if they're substantially changing those building permits, then it would be subject to a conditional use permit. Which it would be determined by a recommendation from the Planning Commission, City Council.
So it's still have to go back before Planning Commission?
That, the conditional use per, yeah, it does have to go through the conditional use permit process.
So if we were to come out here tonight with something to move forward with, uh, the council would have to say, go to the Planning Commission?
Well, so that is only if they're substantially changing the plans. And that's, that hasn't been firm yet.
All right, um, I just wanted to make one comment, um, Mr. Oday, that, uh, I think in the letter, they weren't saying there's issues related to COVID. They're saying, I think they're similar to how things.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanted to make.
Blamed on tariffs.
Well, tar, yeah, correct.
Couple different things, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak. Mr. Jaeger.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, from, I guess from my seat, I've seen a couple things here. As a, as a, as a member of the EDA, when the EDA enters into agreements like this, the expectation is, is that we are, uh, expecting a return on our investment in time, effort, energy and so forth. When that doesn't get met, then we have new, we, we have new obstacles and new challenges to think about. To me, the construction industry is fraught with peril of construction cost ebbing up and down. When you're in the industry, when you're in the industry of building whatever it is, part of the risk of not building at that time is the potential for escalated cost. Anyone who knows anything about construction knows this, this should not be a surprise that if they didn't build, that they may see costs go up or down. We see some costs right now coming down. Oil related items, for instance, in many cases are coming down. Other costs are going up. So to me, that is not a viable excuse of why not to build. However, um, I would be potentially curious to know, Mr. Lengel, this may be a question for you. Is a, a contract hold compensation structure is not an outrageous idea? Meaning that you have a contract in place and there is a, a, a compensation structure for the lag time of which until that takes place, say fifty-five thousand dollars a month or something like that. Could, is it a possibility to move forward with a contract extension with a precursor to that contract extension being a, a, a hold penalty? Um, a dawn penalty?
I mean, certainly this, the, the EDA, the BPU can, can put that out there. Uh, it's, 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 you know, you guys are in a position here where we don't have a signed contract. You do have a contract with VCV, that's, that's sitting there for the EDA, but there's no, there's no power contract. So yeah, there, you certainly have options here in terms of negotiations.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Anyone else have questions, comments?
I have a couple of questions. One I want to ask Trent first and foremost, have we had to throttle back yet on JFK yet going into the summer months? Knowing capacities, we're going to need as much as we can as the city.
BPU has had to curtail, uh, MISO has curtailed them, but it's been on the same average pace that we've been seeing for the last couple of years.
Okay, because when you talk about, you know, you ran the numbers, I just want to make sure that we're made aware that summer, summer months, we use the power, we use the majority of it and they become second. Okay, just want to make sure. Um, and I know today, just, just in checking, um, Bitcoin was trading at a hundred and two thousand dollars, uh, a coin. Um, so I know there's, there is a desire to want to move forward with them. I, I get this and I understand it. I think from the BPU's perspective, when we first entered into this power agreement, I think we were all a little surprised that they hadn't come to the city first and that there wasn't a checklist of EDA requirements. Um, now that the property is encumbered with stipulations of what can and can't be there, um, we are kind of, we are kind of specific to the type of business that is going to be at that particular property. So I guess I'm looking at it as, I completely understand they've got several hundred thousand dollars into the planning piece of it. Um, I was unaware of what they had into it. Um, but I also think that there was a lot of steps that were taken that weren't taking in the right order, um, which found us in this predicament. I don't understand why the contract still isn't signed. Uh, that makes zero sense to me, um, which is why we asked for this meeting because we needed to find out from you guys why, what was taking so long? Why don't, why don't they own the property? I mean, this is all, this was all second news to us and kind of surprising. So I think it really first and foremost comes back to what is the desire of this company to move forward? You've got an investment into this property. What is holding you back first and foremost from signing a contract that we can't continue as a city move forward until we know where you're at? So I don't know how we move forward unless we have some specific answers and some contracts signed. But it is my understanding and my feeling that there should be some sort of heavy non-refundable deposit to be made, to be had, if the patience of this council, um, is to be asked for. That there needs to be some deadlines. I get really tired of pushing that deadline when we, nothing gets, ever gets met. There's no ramifications when deadlines come and go. Um, and we just potentially miss out on, on selling to other people. So that's all I really wanted to say with it, but I just wanted to make aware that, um, we do actually curtail JFK or anybody else for that matter, um, because the residents come first. So thank you for answering that.
Thank you. Johnson?
Yeah, and just to piggyback off of Bitcoin being a hundred two thousand, when they first came to us, it was like forty-five thousand. So if they're actually Bitcoin miners, why can't they pay for a ten percent tariff from Canada? I don't get it. Why couldn't they pay for it before the tariff was even in play? Today, they would probably blame the con cave is why they couldn't get this done. But, uh, as a councilman, as an EDA member, I know I asked questions saying, well, we don't even have a contract, so why should I even care? If the commission wants to move forward to continue working with these people, I'm perfectly fine with it. You know, to also answer your questions, Jeff, I'm not going to sit, stand here today and demand we walk away from them, but I do think, developing what Kevin said, yeah, we should have financial penalties. We should, if they want to buy twenty megawatts and that's fifty-five thousand dollars a month, they should be kicking out fifty-five thousand dollar a month at a date set. And they should have to sign the contract. We can't continue operating like, these guys have a contract or we're extending anything because there is no contract. If we tried to hold them accountable for anything, they would say, we don't have a contract, what are you talking about? Because we don't have a contract. So that's right.
Thank you. Mr. Bevins?
Thank you, I agree with what Chairman Johnson and Mr. Jaeger said. I, if we are going to sign a contract with these folks, it's got to be within ten days or a certain time period. Okay? It's got to be a short enough extension that anything after that extension has to be, they have to cover our opportunity costs. And I would expect a surety bond of at least four months on that part of it. So I don't want to, I don't want to be trying to get money out of them in a hundred and eighty days when they don't pay. As far as the EDA contract, we have people who buy property all the time and don't do anything with it. That, I mean, that, I kind of get that. I understa, I mean, look at the Drifty White Building. All they've done is dig a hole.
We got grass.
Like grass, right? Which I kind of like the grass. Through the little doggies do too, we heard all about that.
Mini golf.
At the CUP mini golf parking lot. Um, but I, I would not favor changing the roof structure that they proposed. I mean, that's the one thing we get with this company. It's a, compared to what we already have. One is, I think they're gonna, and I, I would defer to Trent, I think they're gonna, they're gonna buy more, I think, than our existing company. So we'll make more money, buy more, make more. And the other thing is, is the other company snuck in under the radar and doesn't meet the same, at least noise qualifications that block metrics, that we're holding block metrics to. So that's. So that's a, I mean, that's a plus. These things don't produce employees. And maybe there's a little bit, we talked about the improvements to the property, maybe there's some increase in property taxes, but nothing like what we'd make off the electricity. But I would support that, but I would want a contract signed as soon as we could get BPU Commission to come up with the parameters of that contract and the EDA to come up with the parameters of that contract, and then I'd give them a short leash on when they sign it and don't sign it. And they, you know, as far as the property transfer from VCV, I've bought property before, takes about an hour. Right? I mean, that, I don't want to hear that. Stick your neck out, if they got hundreds, I don't know why, I can't remember what the pri, what was the purchase price of that property?
Purchase price was somewhere, somewhere between two twenty, two thirty of the actual property.
Two twenty seven.
So then now they're putting, now they're putting their money, if you want an extension, let's get rolling. They told, I heard on the PUC, they hadn't even ordered the transformers yet. Well, I, I would imagine it's probably is going to take longer to what, to Gates' point, those should have been ordered last fall. So, anyway, that's my point. I would support all of that, but really it comes, it really comes down to the public utilities, because that's.
Yep.
That's where, that's where the interest of the citizens of Brainerd is financially.
Right.
And I support what the PUC has done so far, I mean, you get an A plus for effort.
Mr. President? Uh, we got Stunek next, and I'll go back to you.
It just, everything we've done here tonight is all negativity toward this company, and it's been going on for years and years and years. I agree with what everybody's been said, but when are we going to lock the door and say goodbye? If they were aggressive enough and wanted to really do this, they'd have been doing it by now. It's time for us to stand tall and do it. We'd never move forward as a city council or a city of Brainerd without signing a contract. We'd either get aggressive with it or we'd walk away.
Thank you. Chazak?
Well, that's a, this is a new company of, of last August, I believe. So it's just a, associated with VCV, they brought them in. So that, that is the one exception, or to, I agree with Mr. Stunek, but that is the exception to that. And then the, um, I, I, I agree we should have that escrow payment, whatever you want to call it. That's to cover our costs for the infrastructure that Trent speaks of, the one seventy-five to two hundred thousand. And also the power, I agree with Mr. Jaeger here, I believe that was to your point, moving forward on that note. That's up to the Public Utilities Commission, the other purchase agreement. Is there, is there something to do with permitting, James? That they aren't able to purchase until all the permitting is done? Is that their want? Is that more of a want they have to get that, all the permitting done? Is that the city telling them, you can't exchange the ownership until the permitting's done? How is that working?
So until they have the, the land transferred on the way the EDA contract's written up, they wouldn't be able to execute it. So they have to become the developer and the landowner at that point. Permitting is probably something on their end that they want to make sure that they don't have issues, um, with the city, um, or any type of requirements for any land use permits before pulling the trigger on the, on the actual purchase of the, the property. That's more on their end, I, I could go to figure.
Okay, and one other thing to the transformers, in their email that we got, at least Mr. Broyle sent that out, they are saying that six months is the outside time and it's actually they're, they're anticipating sooner. That was what you guys talked about at the Utility Commission last week, it was questionable if they can do that. I, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding that, because I believe it's like twenty-four weeks, um, which six months, correct? So that, that was in, they claimed they could get it at the outside, if I'm not mistaken. So, I'm not saying that as a point of argument or anything, I'm just saying that's what we have from their text message or email. So, if that makes a difference or not, but that's all I have.
Thank you. Who else? Danny?
Just a point of clarification, so I have an email from Row with a quote that expired in April for Block Metrics for their transformer and had a ten-week lead time. And we've been working with Block Metrics for less than a year, because they bought the property or switched from AnChang to Block Metrics in around May of last year. Just those clarifications.
They were ordering it and that, that agreement has expired too?
They have not ordered it, but we do have a quote saying that it could arrive within ten weeks.
So if they, if they were to.
Ten weeks.
Open up that order again, it would possibly be ten weeks still?
Potentially.
Okay.
All right. James, how long and to, it, it, first of all, I don't know why you would not change another change that they want. I mean, they already went forward with the roof. I mean, by doing that, that's going to delay things, what, ninety days? I mean, this is where we're running into the problems, how long till EDA can sell that land and, and they can move forward? I guess that's, seems to be kind of what the holdup is, even though they haven't really said that and guessing.
Yeah, so cert, so, like, so if they were to purchase it or if the EDA were to take the property back?
For Block Metrics to get the property and move forward, how long is, is that going to take?
No, they could do it now.
One hour.
They could do it now, they're, they're try, they're trying to get rid of all their risk before they transfer it. What we want them to do is transfer it and move forward.
Same as what we want.
Right.
Basically, we want them to.
So my idea.
Step up to the plate.
My idea is, if we want to extend this extension of a new contract that they, it is a new contract, they've never signed one. So if we want to offer this to them, if they don't sign it, I think BPU staff should be open to hearing offers from other entities. And it just, it doesn't have to be JFK, it can be anyone else. I know that people were knocking on the door before, and if somebody has a better project that they can come in and swoop up that property, well, we can work with them if these guys are unwilling to work with us.
They've already proven they don't want to work with us.
That's what it seems like. They're not signing. Mr. Chazak?
I, I can comfortably sit here and say, I'm not interested in changing anything on the roof. So as one person that would have a decision in that, I'm not interested in changing that. So if we could perhaps agree or disagree as a council, it's how we want to move forward with that, that'd be one thing we would have to talk about and go back to planning its own. So I mean, that might be a place to start, at least we decide, we could decide on that right now, if there's, say, a motion to grant planning zone for the conditional use or not, or, or just do nothing as, you know, consensus vote is all we need. I mean, I, that's where I'm at. I don't want to see that go back, I think they made that offer, we should hold them to that. Rest of you disagree, that's, that's why we sit here and make a decision. So that would be at least a start here to move forward, get that off the table.
Okay.
My thought.
Yep, the other side of that would be, they would have to, whatever, whatever new plan they come up with would have to meet with our new ordinance that we just passed on Monday night. So it still would have to meet sound requirements. A roofless building seems like an odd thing to build. And I don't know, I don't even know how that would be taxed compared to a building with a roof, James?
So that's just the air cooling building. Um, it's not, there'd still be the primary building in front with all the, with the data miners themselves. Um, so that's just essentially the air conditioning units that they had proposed as the, kind of the secondary building behind it.
Okay.
Question.
Go ahead. Johnson?
So, James, what is the benefit to the city or the EDA or whatever right now to continue with this, uh, PDA? Can we just reach out to VCV and see if we can just eliminate it? Or is there something that we want that really is important to us in that agreement?
So right now, um, both parties are blinded by the agreement.
Unless we both agree to not. Is there something that the city wants or the EDA wants that we really want that PDA to still exist?
You know, I'm not sure what alternative sites there would be potentially for, um, crypto. Um, certainly there's a, a line that goes to the end of that property that's been installed, um, by Brainerd Public Utilities, paid for by VCV. Um, so if, if the city wishes to continue, um, that property, you know, is probably, I, fairly ideally set up for crypto, um.
But, but, but we passed a data center ordinance and crypto is allowed with CUP and the city of Brainerd. I'm asking, what about the PDA that we have that the city wants that is important to us to keep in an agreement?
What's, what's currently in the, in the purchase development agreement that we would want to keep in the purchase and development agreement?
That is important to us, that we wouldn't want to just eliminate the whole PDA, yeah.
Um, if we are, if we eliminated the PDA, then they could do whatever they wanted with the property, wouldn't have to go back to the EDA.
Within our zoning code?
Would they, yep, they would just be subject to the zoning code at that point.
Which is a bad, do we have a bad zoning code?
No, it's, uh, you know, the, what, what they'd be, there is significant investment in there now with that line going in there, so the chances of, you know, that property being potentially used for mini storage, um, which doesn't bring in a lot of, doesn't bring in any employees, doesn't bring in any extra revenue, any revenue to Brainerd Public Utilities. That'd be one example, if they didn't put that electrical line in there, that we give that away, we don't have any control of that development anymore, and all of a sudden we have mini storage units on that property. So that's one of the reasons for that purchase and development agreement, is to make sure we're not ending up with a very low value development.
Okay, but we have people wanting to build crypto mines and the PDA seems to be one of the things holding them back.
Yes, potentially, and because of that infrastructure that was put in.
Removing that barrier might make it easier.
Could potentially, yes.
Okay.
What is of the infrastructure, we think?
The infrastructure, I think they paid for the infrastructure?
Yes, they paid for all the nuts and bolts for that project, so there was no BPU cost to that extension. That pole line, if these projects die on the vine, can be used for another feeder coming out of our system, so it does not go to waste, we could still use that circuit.
Are we on the hook for that cost?
No, we are not.
Okay.
You got, how, uh, Danny, how long does it take? I, I don't think we asked that question when we met with the attorney on how long it would take to draft a new contract and, I mean, when could we say, you need to sign this contract, you know, a drop dead date?
She's waiting for our response, uh, what happens tonight, so she's prepared to, she, she could probably have us something by the end of next week.
Well, it seems to me that the majority here wants, EDA wants to sell the land and put up a building and we want to sell the power, I don't think anyone can come in, you know, because this is really the only site that's been prepared for that much power. So, I mean, it's still going to take time. So if we could move forward, I still think two hundred and seventy-five thousand put in escrow to get the money to get the job done and to show that they're committed. And then if they can't start by the end of the contract or this extension, that we have a thirty thousand dollar a month fee penalty. You know, we, we've gone on this, we're, we've been losing fifty-five grand a month on these people for quite a while. So, God, I sound like Trump.
They're laughing at you.
I don't disagree. Mr. Sandy?
This might be a question for Joe. Joe, are we able to insert some sort of surety bond language in there if they, if we do go down the path of this fee, fifty-five thousand a month, call it, uh, and they don't pay the bill? Are we able to put language into a contract that requires surety bond so that we can go after that?
Certainly you can come up with your own version of protections in the agreement.
Or just default.
Whether that's cash, whether it's a bond, whether it's whatever. It's, it all depends, it was the two of you agreed to, right?
But whatever we want.
Once they start using the power, we already have that in our existing contract, that's, that's not an issue. They're basically paying upfront.
Okay. Well, the other part about this, you have the staff recommendations with one through four, uh, September first, November first, and you have, uh, number three, that the primary construction deadline, meaning the outdoor, outside of the building is basically done, says negotiable. And then the other part with, uh, what you were just talking about, paying for power or opportunity cost, that's a negotiable deadline as well. I don't want that on a contract agreement. I think all of our deadlines have to be hard stop, concrete, this is the day. We're not coming back to the table and doing this again and again and again. We've wa, we've wasted a lot of time on that. So if we're going to go forward, offering up a contract again, I would be okay if there was hard dates, but you guys have to, with BPU, I think you guys have to set those, you'll understand.
Commission's prepared to do that.
Okay. Um, as far as the EDA stuff goes, as far, as soon as that is not met, one of those deadlines is not met, then I think we come back to the table with a conversation with the EDA again, and we say, okay, let's, let's start opening this up to another group, see if somebody else can come in and, and fill this void that we've now created somehow. If that makes sense? BPU is, you, you, as a commission, I think you guys are, it's up to you guys, really, at this point. We've already sold the land through the council and EDA, um, but that's peanuts compared to fifty-five thousand a month in perpetuity or whatever it ends up being in the future, so that's where the income comes in. Jaeger?
Thank you, just real quickly, I, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of reasons of how we could extend this, but I'm not sure, I understand yet why we want to extend it. If we have somebody ready to rip, I'm just not sure, I'm finding my personal motivation to keep work, keep hashing out a deal with a non-performer when we got, if it is in fact true, and I just want to make sure this is the case, that we have somebody ready to go. No, we do not?
They would have to buy that property.
Oh, I understand, but that's, it's, I, I thought I heard you say that that wouldn't be that.
They would have the same problem.
I see.
You know, so there's a, there's a potential for somebody to take over five megawatts worth of the twenty-five megawatts we're talking about, or the original fifty that we talked about. But I think we only have capacity with where we're at for another twenty-five, correct? Right now? Or is it fifty?
Just for cri, just for crypto?
No, I'm not talking about them at all. Well, the fi, the five that you spoke about earlier. Uh, Trent?
Yeah, so when we did the initial calculations on that back four years ago, uh, we had a fifty megawatts total of extra capacity. That moved into the VCV contract, since they did not move the ball anywhere, twenty-five percent of that covered out for JFK, so there's twenty-five percent, uh, or twenty-five megawatts, excuse me, left of capacity right now that we would feel comfortable, um, releasing.
Okay. And to increase anything beyond that, we would have to have an increase in infrastructure coming from the grid into our.
Correct, and this works because it's interruptible loads for us, so if we're having an issue, we can shut down their load and it goes straight to the city. So we're very comfortable as far as the operations of the grid, we're, we're doing well, we're okay.
Yep. So my, my point is, I guess, we have twenty-five megawatts for sale, nobody's under contract for that. We should be lis, listening and hearing from other groups that are willing to come in and buy that, but like you were saying, it, it would be starting over again. So that's, that's the other opportunity cost. I think by extending this offer, it is kind of one last shot at trying to get this done as fast as it can get done. And if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, then we, we lost out again and we have to start over again. Kelly?
And I agree, and I think all parties have got a lot invested into this. I think where, uh, some of this came in is when they came to a board meeting and they had asked about, uh, it, the change in the roof. And as Mr. O'Day said, you know, this, this isn't where you asked that question, we're here about selling power. So the, with what Mr. Chazak is saying, it really is going to stem from, if I'm wrong, please correct me, if they, the, the agreement is not to, not to be able to remove the roof. They were the ones that came up with that plan, that's the design we're moving forward. If we don't change that, the deadlines can then start, we can start adding those deadlines, right? I, it's what it all revolves around, is this roof planned or not, correct?
Yeah, certainly if that's removed, um.
Nope, not removed. If we have to leave it in there, I mean, if it, if we're leaving it in there, can, it's easier to create these deadlines now because then everybody knows what we're, we're, we're working on, right?[1749.88]
It is, yep.
Okay, so we're looking, it's what I'm hearing is if there's no change in the roof plan, they can now make that ten-day, twenty-day, whatever agreement in, in signing these agreements. I think we, we got up at least dot, dot the I. The I is the roof. Let's figure that part out right now. We're not making any changes. They know what they're getting into. Let's move forward with that and then we can create these contracts with depths, with specific deadlines, specific deposits, the specific penalties. And if they're not willing to sign that contract within the next ten days, we then look for other people. But we know what we're working with, with capacity. We know what we have, we know what we can move forward with, and we know what type of building would have to be on that property. So that's what we needed to iron out today. So I'm happy with your guys' answers because it gives us direction on how we move forward with the power agreement. So, right?
Agreed.
Okay.
Mr. Chazak?
I hear ten days. I, I'm not objecting to that, except you guys meet on the twenty-seventh, two weeks from Tuesday, unless you want to meet sooner. Uh, EDA Wednesday, when are you guys scheduled to meet again?
June.
Yeah, so it's the first Thursday in June. It would be the next regular meeting.
Sure, I don't think there's anything for the EDA.
No, I don't think so either.
Asking, um, uh, we meet on the twelve, or nine, I'm sorry, the nineteenth, I believe.
Yep.
So I'd be comfortable just saying right off, so this can get off the dead center with that roof deal. I mean, I, I mean, if you'd entertain a motion, I, I don't like to make a motion to not do something, but at least it tells them. As a council, we have everybody here, but I think Mr. Erson, unless I'm, unless I, people disagree with this, I, that's all we find out.
Well, it's not the, it's not the formal process that we would go through for that because it would be a CUP that would go to planning. So having a vote on it before it's in front of us would probably be premature. But a general consensus, I'm not interested in it either.
Okay.
We, we've already, we've already approved the plans for the building that they wanted to build. And it's not up to us to have to come up with some way to make that technology different. That should have been figured into it.
Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, we already approved a building design that they proposed. This, this isn't something we told them they had to build. This is what they wanted to build and we proposed. I'm not interested at all in even saying how I feel about a change in the roof or any of that because there is a legal process that we have to go through, which is going to planning and zoning and doing the findings and facts and all of that stuff that could drag this out even longer and get us in a lawsuit for not going about it the legal way. So I don't, I don't think we should be taking any votes or anything unless we do ask planning and zoning to look at our zoning code and see how it does or does not fit within the rules that we have.
Okay.
I mean, that's essentially what I was asking for. Are we willing to go to planning zone? If we're not, that tells them everything they need to know. So, but yeah, I get the point though.
I see, well, both Anglin and Langle, whoever wants to respond.
Just to follow up on, on what Gabe was saying there, yeah, there's a legal process. So under the law, a conditional use permit, you're entitled to it. You're entitled to it. If you apply for it and you satisfy the requirements and the ordinance, you are entitled to have it. So, yeah, I don't, I agree. I don't want to be stating anything here that would be contrary to that process or to, would somehow give rise to a claim under that, under that process. You know, you can, I think it's pretty clear what some people's viewpoints are on, on the issue. But beyond that, I, I, I don't suggest.
Well, they can make the request, is what you're saying.
They can certainly make the request and you have to process the request.
Tell them that that's going to extend the time it's going to take them to get it done. I think between, you know, Danny and us, we can get all that figured out at this point.
What we're going to do is just move forward, put together a contract, give back to them after this conversation, regardless of the roof. I mean, that's our next step. That's what we told them that we would do. And so we're just going to proceed, put a contract together, put in front of them as quickly as we can.
Long as the contract is airtight, but I really think that you should give them a deadline on, and add that deadline right on here.
Well, the two hundred and seventy-five thousand needs to be given to us at the time we sign the contract.
There should be a deadline on when they sign the contract. None, none of this, let's get everything in line so there's no more risk left for my company, then I'll sign the contract. No, sign the contract, move forward, hit your deadlines.
Yeah, we're ready to do that again.
I don't see why it can't be the end of the month, really, because we meet and we can approve as a commission and then have them sign. They need to be ready to sign.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Sandy?
I was just wondering with, um, have you seen a proposal for this roof removal? Do you have any inkling if it's going to meet the code at this point?
So certainly I have to go through the findings of fact. I did state in my memo when I did the sound calculations, didn't factor in a roof, any of the sidewalls. The sidewalls do have some airflow through them. But the calculations that I did were based on no structure there whatsoever because I couldn't mathematically calculate that. So based on my calculations, certainly meets the, the MPCA requirements.
Anything else? Anything left out? All questions answered? Anybody want to sing a song? No?
Kumbaya?
Yeah. It's a good one.
You might not like the song I'm singing.
All right, if, if there's nothing left to answer, I don't think we're needing a motion right now. I think we're in agreement, so.
Move to adjourn.
We got a motion to adjourn, second by Stunek. All those in favor? Aye. Again, same sign, we adjourn.